Okay, six o'clock. So I'd like to call this meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission to order. Ms. Glickman, would you please take the role? Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
Commissioner McCombs? Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Stoneman?
Here.
Commissioner Juretsky?
Here.
Commissioner Courier?
Here.
Okay, Mr. McCombs told me he was going to try and be online. Oh. I don't see him as of yet, but welcome. Okay, so he may show up. I'm wondering, we don't usually do a pledge of allegiance, but this is nine eleven, and I'm wondering if we could start the meeting with at least a pledge of allegiance. Okay, item number two is minutes, and we do not have minutes yet. And so number three is public comment. If there's anybody in the public who would like to speak about an item not on the agenda, we'll be happy to hear you, give you three minutes. And if you want to speak about something on the agenda, we'll give you that after the presentation. So whichever you would like, or both, is fine. If you'd just come up and state your name and your city, please.
Hi, my name is Bill Turner. I live at 2012 I. Avenue, Anacortes. And I'm holding here page six of the Housing Action Plan, in which it gives the priority level and the time you expected to do it. This was issued in June of 2023. So it's a little over a year old. You were, the city promised, or not promised, but, you know, as a goal, they said that they would put a map of the R3A zone and update its standards for six, in six months, streamline the ADU regulations in six months, adjust to form an intensity of standards for those things in six months, adjust definitions to design standards in certain zones in six months, and parking. And here's one of the things that I'd really like you to get with, get with the city, is hire a housing coordinator. High, it says high priority, zero to six months. That means it's six months old, it's past its six-month due date. Okay, that would be, if you guys had a housing coordinator, I could talk to them, I could feed them information about things. I'm a past developer, and past city councilperson, past home builder, I have lots of information, past president of Habitat. And if I had somebody to talk to, particularly on one subject, and transfer that information to you, I think things would go a lot better. And, public land for affordable housing, it says medium and ongoing. Well, I was in here in 2018 with Habitat, sat down with Don Mismer, and we started doing that in 2018. Okay, now that was before this was developed, but nothing has happened, and for whatever reasons, and I'm not, I don't have the purview of any of that information. I have asked, and I don't really get an answer. And there's other ones of low priorities. So, I've been working on housing issues for, since the 1990s, as a builder, because of the huge houses I was building, and I can sort of, it wasn't hard for me to see that down the road, these things are going to be not useful too much for, to house people, two people in a 5,000-square-foot home. I built a lot of houses from 3,000 to 5,000 square feet. The ADU stuff that is on, that is a state is mandated, coming down, the housing coordinator, the multifamily tax exemption, all those things have not been done yet, they're all passed their due date. And so I wonder why that is. And I'm ready to go to the Housing Committee, with the city council, three city council members and others, and talk to them about how we can do this. I've been thinking about this for a long time, and I would like to see some action. I would like to see the city give you the duty of taking one neighborhood at a time, or one zone at a time, and put together a package with public input of what the public wants in those areas. Because Anacortes in the past has lots of opinions.
Mr. Turner, your three minutes are up, Mr. Turner.
Three minutes is up?
Yep.
That was quick. Well, anyway, please help me.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner's staff, members of the audience, hopefully some viewing public. The first thing I wanted to do was thank you.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Oh, sorry, Ian Muntz, 1711 Quail Drive, Anacortes. First thing I wanted to do was thank the commission and the staff for the new procedure. So Thursday, the agenda package came out, I was able to get some comments together, staff were good enough to get those out to you Monday. So I think, it's certainly an expedited schedule, but I think it's workable. So I wanted to thank you all for that. Hopefully it won't count against my three minutes. No, okay. Second point I'd like to make is that the planning department has been ridiculously underfunded for years. And now all of a sudden it gets dumped on the Planning Commission without the data, the resources, the analysis that you frankly deserve. I mean, the same people are trying to do permits as do long-range planning. And my comments aren't a criticism of staff, it's that my criticism of city leadership, underfunding exercises, and expecting them to be done anyway. The Housing Action Plan is a good example. Oh, we love it, we're not going to do anything. Particular note I wanted to comment, got my attention, was the Makers Consultants talked about it not being fashionable, my words, their words, fashionable, to talk about character. I just want to go back to 1990 and the subsequent comprehensive plans. The very first thing that people decided in 1990, when the Growth Management Act passed, we wanted to be a small town. There was an original suggestion, we could be 30,000. But we let Mount Vernon steal that population away from us, because we wanted to stay a small town. So that's an underlying value, it's in almost every other paragraph in the current comp plan. And the other thing that talked about is neighborhood character. People, I mean, I'm sorry, I, people love their neighborhoods. They want the character to be the same. And some folks at the city think they can just come in and change that. It's not going to work. It's being dumped on you to somehow figure this out. It can't be figured out. And the, this whole notion of densifying the city, which the council says, well, we're just going to start small, and we're going to build up to it, it's not what people want. People like where they are. And so, if you ask people, put an advisory vote in the ballot, would you like the city to be densified? No. Are you open to having infill with notice to neighbors, public comment, and hearing examiner decision, so we make sure the new development fits? Yes. I bring a lot of experience behind this, and I've been out, but you should not be in the situation you are now, with a report, without a report from staff saying, we've had eight neighborhood meetings, here's a summary of the comments received, we've met with eight homeowners associations, here are their concerns, we've met with stakeholders, here are their concerns. All of a sudden, it's seven members of the Planning Commission are supposed to decide the future of the city?
Mr. Muntz?
That's just not right.
Thank you.
And it's not your fault.
Thank you. Hearing or seeing no more people for public comment. I see that there is not a public hearing on our agenda, so we are on item 5A, Other Business, 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update, Land Use and Housing Regulatory Concepts, Presentation and Discussion. Chairman, I just wanted to point out that Mr. McCombs did join us online. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. McCombs, wherever you are.
Thank you, good to be here.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Libby Graich, Planning Manager, City of Anacortes. I, before handing it over to Marcus Johnson with Makers, wanted to just give a quick project status update. This again is the comp plan update preliminary timeline that you can find in the public participation plan that was adopted by city council a few months ago. The, we are currently right here in the shaping the plan, phase of this process, we're September, and so we are right now still information gathering and gathering and doing analysis to support many of the elements, proposed changes. We are also working on drafting the land use and housing element, the policy proposed changes. And we are also having Planning Commission work sessions and eventually public hearings on each of those elements. So you can see, this is the full time span. We didn't really start in earnest until about the March-April timeframe. And our deadline for completing the periodic update under state law is December 2025. So just to get a little bit more into the weeds on what steps are involved in the time period that we're in now. So over the fall and winter of 2024 to 2025, as I mentioned, we will be releasing proposed draft policy revisions and associated code amendments for each element of the comprehensive plan separately, and we'll be introducing those to the Planning Commission at work sessions. These are the, just as a reminder, this is the current comprehensive plan and the elements of the comp plan, so the land use, housing, economic development, et cetera. So when those proposed policy revisions for each element are released, we will provide notice to the public of their availability, and also advertise written public comment periods and a public hearing for each of the elements. So the purpose of this process is to get early feedback from the, from the public that can then, and from the Planning Commission, of course, that can then be integrated into a second complete draft of the comprehensive plan that will have all the elements together. So it'll be one document that can be reviewed and commented on. So we expect that document to be released in approximately spring 2025. And then finally, summer/fall of 2025 would be additional public hearings with the Planning Commission, and ultimately, recommendation to city council on the comprehensive plan and development regulation amendments. And then city council would undertake their adoption process. Are there any questions about that? Makes sense, sort of?
Chairman Martin?
Mr. Mills?
Yeah.
Clarification?
Sure.
You're using the term workshop. And to me, a workshop is a sit around the table, working on something. But I get in the sense that what we're doing tonight is considered a workshop?
That's my take, yes. It's not a, like a regular, like a public hearing.
I understand public hearing being separate, but this is a formal session, but we're considering it a workshop as well, just so I understand. When I see something on a calendar that's called a workshop, I shouldn't expect a separate meeting, I should expect it to be a formal setting?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Muntz, after we have the presentation from the, Mr. the Makers gentlemen, then I'll allow public comment, and then we will have a conversation. So please hang on to that, so that, yeah, we will give you the opportunity to speak
So just to give a preview of what, when these proposed policy revisions are released for each of the draft elements, the format that they will be in is a spreadsheet or a table that will have all of the current comprehensive plan goals and policies written out, the proposed changes to the goals and policies in a strike-through, underlying format. And then the last column will be the rationale or the reasoning for each of the proposed amendments. So that's what you can expect to see for each of the elements. This is my last one. So coming up, just a summary of some of the upcoming dates, on September 25th, we will be bringing to the Planning Commission the land use and housing elements, draft proposed policy revisions, including proposed future land use map revision, revisions. And then on October 9th, we'll be talking about the transportation element. October 23rd is an open house, the second open house, and that has been scheduled. And those are the dates that we have for certain right now, we may need to do some special meetings that we will definitely advertise and let the public know if we do need to do that. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Graich. Thanks.
Ms. Turner, can I ask a question?
Mr.?
Mr. Stoneman.
Stoneman. I can only remember your first name.
Thank you, that's okay. Libby, do we, with the, when we talk about taking the comments in, and if I've missed this, I apologize, but do we ever go line by line and say, this was a dumb idea that this person said, and this is why, or this is a great idea, and wish we'd thought of this, or anything like that?
We do do that during formal public comment periods. We have done that in the past, where we've gone through each comment and summarized it, and then provided, you know, a recommendation from staff on how to deal with that comment.
Okay.
When it's a situation like we have for the periodic update, where we're just accepting comments, you know, all the time, it would be very difficult to do that. But we do do our best to, you know, summarize those and integrate those into the draft documents.
Okay, thanks.
Right, thank you. So now do we meet?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Hi, Marcus. I'd like to introduce Marcus Johnson, he's with, he's a planner with Makers, and he's going to provide the presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Libby. Great to meet everyone. I'm going to, in one moment, and I'll set up for a share screen, the presentation. Everyone's seeing that okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, as Libby touched on already, today, I'm here to kind of discuss the second half of the remaining regulatory concepts that the project team has worked on for this early draft phase of integrating the HAP strategies. And so this will include updates to development standards and density, adjustments to design standards, and adjusting parking standards as well. And just to continue with that note, Bob, at the last meeting, also at Makers, would have discussed the kind of first half, everything above this green table, and I'm going to be covering the second half, everything within the green table that is included within these topics. And just some presentation, I want to make sure that I am allowing time, so I've left some opportunities for questions in, during the presentation. So I'll take some moments to pause and be able to take some questions, unless you would like, prefer me to just go through the presentation altogether, and then take questions and...
Commissioners, I'm thinking, just go through it. Yes, okay, I'm seeing nods. Let's just go through the whole presentation, and then we'll have public comments, and then we'll have discussion amongst the planning commissioners.
Okay. Can do that then. So first, HAP Strategy 2.4.2 is looking at updating maximum lot coverage. And here specifically, it's looking at updating maximum lot coverage in the current R4 and R4A zone. And so currently, R4 and R4A zones have a lot coverage of 50% and a minimum landscape area standard of 20%. We were, we're not proposing touching the minimum landscape area standard of 20%, but the HAP does describe and discuss how the current maximum lot coverage for, is generally on the lower side for higher-density zones, when you look at other jurisdictions, which can be particularly impactful for smaller sites, when they're trying to do development and not having as much space to do those new developments. And so the proposed update here, code update would just be to increase the maximum lot coverage for R4 and R4A zones to 60%, give a 10% bonus here, so a slight update there. And just for comparison, the state middle housing model code sets the max lot coverage at, for six units at 55%. So we're expecting development in the R4 and R4A zones to be more than six units, and we want to align kind of the lot coverage allowance with the high-density zone itself. The next HAP strategy is looking at updating density standards, and in particular, for minimum density, well, so one idea here is that there's no, there's currently no minimum density standards in the zoning code, but with the R4 zone in particular, wanting to make sure that there is a minimum density allowance in this zone, just to make sure that when new development does happen, it's happening at a certain, at a certain density. That, and there's basically trying to dissuade any underbuilding within the zone, as this is kind of the high-density zone, and you want to get the most out of housing capacity out of, out of this zone as possible. 15 dwelling units per acre is consistent with minimum densities in Anacortes's CBD and commercial and mixed-use zones. And then the numbers here, so we put a range for where this minimum density would apply to. So it wouldn't apply over all R4, but it would apply to R4s with, with a lot that has 12,000 square feet or more, or 15,000 square feet or more in size. And these numbers, the 12,000 to 15,000 range, we've kind of provided options to get feedback on which, which, which number you feel is more appropriate for the R4 zone, and which would be more appropriate for a minimum density. The 12,000 generally come, these numbers come from most lots in R4 zones, typically being between 6,000 and 7,500 square feet in R4. And so these are just basically looking at the assembly of two of the same colored, the same number, size lots. So two lots of 6,000 square feet would get you 12,000 square feet, and two lots of 7,500 would get you 15,000 square feet. So that is how we got to these numbers, or why we've kind of put these numbers as an example there. And I know density can be a little hard to kind of think about, so we put an example of what would hap, what, recent development on a 15,000-square-foot lot, these are, this is a 10-unit development, which is about 30 dwelling units per acre, approximately. And so essentially, the minimum, the minimum density would ensure that on a lot this, on a lot this size, you would be developing at least five units, and not anything underneath five units, four units or less. Additionally, we were, the HAP looks at updating maximum density in all residential zones. And so the current code, maximum density standards range from two to 18 dwelling units per acre, depending on the zone. The current zone also has max densities that calculate using gross acres, which I think is, which is another suggested change that we would look to change, is that instead of calculating kind of a budding right-of-way, we would take that out and just look at the lot itself, in terms of density. And the current maximum densities, based off of discussions that we, that, from the last previous meeting, would prevent new types of development. So if you're looking at a duplex on a 6,000-square-foot lot, that's about 15 dwelling units per acre, and currently underneath most maximum density standards in most of the zones, you wouldn't be able to do a duplex on because of the maximum density standard currently. R3 and R3 zones, or the R3 zones have already kind of been updated to focus on minimum lot size, instead of typical dwelling units per acre measurement. This has already been updated, and so the proposed update is essentially doing the same thing for the other zones, which is removing the use of the maximum density standards because of other HAP recommendations that are allowing duplexes by right in the R2A zone, and triplexes by right potentially in the R3 zone, and instead of regulating by maximum density by dwelling unit per acre, instead relying on minimum lot size standards and permitted uses as the governing kind of density standard. HAP Strategy 2.4.5, which is looking at updating setbacks. This is a small one, it's looking at the front street setback, in particular at the R2A and the R3 zones, which are currently 20 feet, and looking at reducing these to 15 feet. The reason for the suggestion is just that because the R2A zone and the R3 zones would be looking to allow new permitted uses in terms of duplex in R2A zone and triplex in R3 zones, or that, that's a HAP strategy there, that the 15 feet complements better with these middle housing types that are adding a little bit more density within the current lot configuration. And that 15 feet still provides adequate space for usable open space and landscaping, as you can see with the image over here on the right. And garages would still be required to have a minimum 20-foot street setback, so if you have a garage at the front of the unit, your building would still be setback. And this is again, just a minimum setback standard, not a required setback, so essentially, if you were, if you wanted to push back further for some reason, there's something on the lot that, or the development would do better, did push back, that is still available. The other setback concept that was touched on in the HAP and that we're proposing here is related to interior side upper floor setbacks. And so here, the current code says that there's basically a mismatch between the side setbacks in most zones, saying five-foot side setback, and then an interior side upper floor setback of seven and a half feet for many zones. And so the image on the right is basically trying to show the expectation of what happens versus kind of reality, and basically, essentially... The image on the right is basically trying to show the expectation of what happens versus kind of reality and ba- essentially what happens is due to construction methods. And costs, a few developments will set back upper floors further than the ground floor. Um, especially for low rise buildings or single family homes or even middle and middle housing types. Um, and so the upper floor setback kind of functions as a whole building side setback. Currently in practice, even though uh the code says otherwise. And so the intention here with this update is to both clarify. Um, and simplify aspect of the code and basically remove the. Incon- the the kind of incongruency between the side setback and the upper floor setback. Um, particularly for the R three, the R four and the R four A zones. So one option could be to keep the side setbacks at five feet. Um, and then remove the minimum interior side upper floor setbacks for the R three, R four and R four A zones. Um, another option is to just make sure the interior floor, the interior side upper floor setbacks are the same. Number, um, the same amount of feet as the side setback, and so that would be potentially adjusting the side setbacks to. Um, seven and a half feet if that is something that is more desired. Taking into account, we have some examples, so this is currently in Anacortes is the example, so these are two homes next to each other. Um, if they were to be developed underneath the current. Code, those um, those second stories should actually be set back. Um, two and a half more feet from the side or the rest or the building should be separated more, and this is kind of a current. Housing structure within the neighborhoods, you probably had about ten to ten feet of space um in between there. Um, on the side there, between the two structures and so it's it's kind of just showing that by feet is plenty of space for. Having um enough separation, having a fence there, having getting certain uh. Utilities and things of that nature within between the structures. The next strategy is um a strategy looking at the height bonus program. And so the current code. For our four CBD and the commercial zones have a bonus height available to developments that meet certain conditions. One condition is to reach, to reach this bonus height is uh development of at least fifty percent of the units being small units. Meaning no bigger than six hundred square feet. Which has been. So far has been successful, the proposed plan would just be updating it slightly. Um, and basically looking to consider or some considerations increasing the size of small units to no bigger than six hundred and fifty square feet. The rationale here is that six hundred and fifty square feet still is relatively on the small side, still looking at a one bedroom. Um apartment or less, but um. It allows for slightly more storage space, um, and it's basically allowing, you know, uh uh. Creating an environment that increases the livability. Uh, for people that might be living in these smaller units by having some more space, whether that be for storage, whether that be for a small den, whether that be for. Kind of a work from home space, um, while also keeping that size uh related to the height bonus. So that's the rationale for the extra fifty square feet. Also related to other housing goals and other live uh life of quality of life goals. Uh, that the city might be trying to achieve, uh, we also propose some ideas around just considering. Other criteria that the height bonus could apply to, so those could be things like. Inclusion of daycare space and service and mixed use development would allow you to be able to get an extra floor. Um, if built in the CBD or the commercial zone. Um, and then development of senior housing or development of assisted living facility or nursing homes um in any of the three zones. Could potentially also be a criteria that helps get you um, helps a developer build another extra floor. Um, allowance. The elevator penthouse, this is a small change where we are really just trying to make sure that. There is no confliction between two um. Kind of elements of livability within a building, so as more multifamily. And as and mixed use buildings in Anacortes are built. Things like elevator design. Uh, can be impacted under the current code. So current standards make it difficult to have both ten feet, a ten foot tall elevator cab and both and a residential roof deck. Because of the, these things collided together, um, only allow fifteen feet of on buildings over four stories. To allow for shared di- roof deck. Um, and so the change here is just essentially giving an extra two feet from fifteen to seventeen feet to make sure that. It's possible for new developments to provide both a shared roof deck and still keep um tall elevator cabs. This next strategy is actually a requirement under state law, so religious religiously owned density bonus. This relates to RCW thirty five A sixty three three hundred, which was enacted in twenty nineteen. Um, and which it says the cities must have and allow increased density bonuses on land owned by religious organizations. If affordable housing for low income households are being developed. The law provides an opportunity for religious organizations to better serve faith based missions related to affordable housing and also was uh was partially. The bill was also partially meant to help. Uh, cities uh. Achieve housing goals and create more affordable housing um in their cities. It turns out after twenty twenty that remote and virtual worship has changed similarly to. How work from home has changed patterns and commute patterns and space, um, office space, and so similarly. Congregation patterns and use of religious space have changed, and so more and more um religious institutions and places of worship are. Considering um how they, how they use their space and whether they can use reuse parts of their space or redevelop parts of their space. Um, to create affordable housing while also still having a place of worship. Bonuses can come in the form of increased height, more lot coverage, reduction of setbacks and less required parking. And this is one where uh the strategy here, so the proposed plan is to set density bonus standards for each residential zone. Or if a religious organization chooses to develop affordable housing. I want to note here that early suggest, this is an early suggestion and that these can be updated throughout the process just as the other ones can, but this. One um in particular. And cities can choose to wait until officially requested by religious organizations before adopting into code, so this is. Both an attempt to give an early uh kind of proactive. Option for the city to be looking at, um, and something that maybe this could be held in their back pocket, waiting for religious organizations. To ask whether they want to do, to do affordable housing, this could also be something the city could put in their code. Um, within the next update, um, and then also be. Uh, reaching out to religious property owners to see if they have any interest or. Just to let them know that this is a, something that can be used and let them know, um, kind of just inform. Religious organizations that maybe are not following. Um, along and be and know that this is a available tool. So the details here are uh kind of grouping different zones into kind of categories and you would have an R one bonus. That uh essentially just reduces the minimum lot size from fifteen thousand to nine thousand square feet only for. Uh, a religious organization and then would also allow townhomes to be a permitted use, so you could do affordable townhomes along with. Um, affordable cottages um or affordable single family homes is currently. Um, kind of the permitted uses that would be allowed for the R one. Uh, zone. Underneath R two, R two A and Old Town. The. Bonuses would look different, slightly different, where you have no interior side upper floor setback um for these zones. As mentioned before, we were discussing no interior side upper floor setback for the R three and R four zones. Um, and then this would apply for religious organizations just in these zones. And then townhomes and triplexes would also be um permitted uses, which they currently are not. And that would be the bonus for those zones. Our three zones would have a bonus that essentially kind of gets some very similar to what our four currently allows. So that is a max height of forty five feet. Uh, forty five feet and a little extra than what's currently allowed in our four of the forty feet, and that's just to allow. For a religious institution to decide if they want to do a mixed use building and still have a tall. Kind of ground floor uh for the religious space and any type of. Um, yeah, for the religious space and then still have um housing units on top of of the church that potentially could serve. Um, both affordable housing and maybe new people um joining the congregation as well. No additional lot size needed and then multifamily of five plus units would be allowed. For religious institutions that were doing affordable housing. And then for our four and our four A, the bonus would be a max height of sixty five feet and an additional five percent lot coverage. The reason for the big jump here on the R four and R four A, the max height of sixty five feet is currently, as we touched on, the height bonus. The current height bonus allowance of uh fifty percent of small units or or affordable or affordable. Housing it allows for our four currently to get up to five stories and so um to make a significant. Um, difference between what's currently allowed in the normal height bonus and what would be allowed for the religious institutions. Uh, doing affordable housing and making it easier to develop affordable housing, um, the the height would go up to sixty five feet. Um, which still allows for a mixed use building, um, kind of a concrete podium on the bottom floor. And then five, five floors of of wood above. Um, for a six story building potentially with, that is mixed use that has maybe church space or. Um, religious space under on the ground floor and then housing on top. Another requirement from the state. Would be HAB Strategy two point five point one, which is amending the definition of family to comply with the state law. So under state law, RCW thirty five A twenty one, three, one, four, which was enacted in twenty twenty one. Um, it's simply just saying that cities may not regulate or limit the number of unrelated persons that may occupy a household. Um, and so. Proposed update is just to change some language in the text right now of the definition of family, um, and make sure that it's not inhibiting or. Um, that the, that the new definition of family complies with the enacted law. Okay, so next is gonna be a run on kind of design standards, uh, most of the design standards, um, and. Uh, I'm sure you were able to kind of preview the packet already, but most of the design standards are clarifications. Um, there are things that kind of are in meant to either make it simpler, make the code simpler. Make it easier to understand um for both uh people looking to develop and also for the people administrating and kind of permitting. And. Things of that nature, so they're generally kind of text changes and not any major updates to anything, so for here, townhomes. It's basically trying to. Remedy the confusion or potential confusion that the current code has and just make it clear that. The design standards for townhomes apply for townhome buildings with four plus units, um, they don't apply for townhomes. Uh, developments that have three units or less. And which sections of the chapter it should be applied to. Same thing with block frontages, so um, looking at a section of code that would clarify that landscape block frontages apply to multifamily. And non residential development or residential zones. And clarifying that landscape block frontage is applied to residential and commercial zones, including townhomes. Um, so it's just some text language updates to make sure that. Landscape block frontage is applied to multifamily and townhomes. Here, fine tuning the usable open space provisions for residential development, so. Open space credit for multifamily developments adjacent to a park. Common indoor recreation areas under subsection. B one D and adding a dimensional standard of two hundred and fifty square feet to ensure recreational spaces are functional. Um, so usable open space, um, and not just use space that can't be used or um. It's not bene- beneficial to anyone. And then. Uh, providing minimum open space standards for new supportive housing as well. So here, this is actually shared open space on roof decks. Um, so currently, shared roof decks can account for fifty percent of required open space for multifamily buildings. And a hundred percent for mixed use buildings. The HAB explore changes to make the code easier to understand and administer, um, and so. We've laid out three different options here, one is just to keep the current language the same. Another is to basically allow them to allow roof deck, shared roof decks. To count for up to fifty percent of required space for all development with multifamily uses. Um, and by doing this, kind of removing the option to count a hundred percent, hundred percent for mixed use buildings. And the thinking here is one to simplify the code, but is also to kind of equalize. Um, the impact of shared roof decks for both the R four zones that only allow multifamily. And the um. Shared roof decks in the mixed use zones like the CBD and commercial zones where um those are mixed use buildings and so. Trying to make sure that the they have this kind of equivalent. Percentage or account for the same percentage of open space. Uh, the third option is a proposal that we heard from the docketing process. Um, and it was MJB's proposal and using, essentially it was going to use this, the current language of fifty percent of required open space. For multifamily buildings, hundred percent for mixed use buildings, and then also um. Allow multifamily buildings incorporated into horizontal mixed use development to also count shared roof decks at as a hundred percent, so. This would essentially expand the hundred percent uh of open space for shared roof deck. Shared roof decks as a hundred percent of open space for mixed use buildings, um, and basically. Both vertically mixed use buildings and horizontally mixed use developments, um, where maybe a multifamily building is built next door to. A commercial use as part of the same development, um, and counting that space as the same. More open space, um. As I mentioned, fine tuning, so just some text changes here that. Could provide more consistency between open space and setback standards. And then landscaping. Fine tuning parking lot landscaping revisions for multi family and townhouse development, and so this would just reduce and simplify the minimum planting area widths. To allow more efficient use of land um from this area, so it's just a a reduction of two and a half feet. Um, for planting areas from ten to seven and a half feet. So this would, this strategy would be looking at minor clarifications to be made about applicability. Um, for service areas in particular. And you can see the text updates there, it's ground level building service areas and mechanical equipment. It's ground level building, surface areas and mechanical equipment um for trash collection and compacters and dumpsters and storage tanks. So it's just looking at um large mul- when large multifamily development comes in. How to um have design standards for the service areas that are servicing uh those homes. Uh, this is a continuation, again, it's just some adding some clarification texts to help construct. So this one here is add following moderation to help control construction costs. Um, this first one, which would just be to the extent practical. Um, so allowing some flexibility um and not dictating um that for every situation that happens in the city. That um the enclosure, the gate swing does not obstruct pedestrian or vehi- vehicular traffic. Um. And the second one is just again uh providing more flexibility and removing some cons- some some material. That might be a high cost constructive material with a um perforated metal. The HAP Strategy two point five, two point five point eight is fine tuning building design standards. Um, and so here would be considering minor revisions to the list of articulation standards that currently. Um, are in building design standards right now. And so reinforced our use of windows and entries to reinforce the articulation pattern. Um, use of awnings or similar weather protection features. Um, and then change in building material or siding style as um. So instead of saying one or saying both of them, it's just change in building material or siding style. Here is just a change to consider revising the entry articulation standard for consistency. Um, so it's removing just some slight changes of words here again, office building to hotel and multifamily building. So not just apartments, but all multifamily buildings kind of being included within these design standards. So that would include some of the new um middle housing types that if permitted would um also have some of these provisions counting toward them. Here is an example of fine tuning the bu- building materials. So it can be um, this is just updating to clarify the applicability of durable materials on the ground floor. Um, and so here's an example of providing some flexibility where um there is some stone. Or there's some brick and machinery that's kind of mixed in with other materials. Um, that are happening on the ground floor. And so this brings up enough kind of fine. This is a type of durable material. It brings enough uh kind of uh visual breaking of the building. And kind of new design, uh nice design that's happening on the ground floor without the whole uh ground entry. Having machinery or stone or anything of that nature. So it's just providing some flexibility within the code for um options there. Here's fine tuning the blank wall standards. So consider updating the applicability of blank wall treatments. And this is uh again, just some new language to make sure that you don't have blank walls. Um, happening as part of new development, especially with uh changes. And hopefully uh more development in the R four and mixed use zones as well. Okay, and then out of design standards. HAP Strategy two point six point one is looking at adjust the adjustment of parking standards. And here, recommended adjustments for parking standards are focused on providing more certainty and clarity. Um, so one would be to do a new parking standard for middle housing. Based off of other HAP strategies that are uh permitting duplexes and triplexes and townhomes as middle housing types in more areas. And so moving away from counting parking by bedroom counts and simpli- simplifying to just one per unit. For middle housing types. Uh, this is similar to uh the standard for single family homes, which is and also similar to what other jurisdictions. And the state model code have um have uh recommended as well. In terms of the amount of park, the the parking ratio that should be going with middle housing types. You have affordable housing. Um, so here is just a clarification. So define and lists multifamily dwelling affordable and then set a minimum parking requirement. That's between one and a half to s- to point seven five spaces per unit. Um, so that would be a new standard, but that is a standard that's parking for particularly for affordable housing. Um, and that would help uh affordable affordable housing developers um make it easier on them to develop and build their projects um as. And then senior housing, it's looking at just renaming the term multifamily dwelling restricted. Or renaming the term that is currently multifamily dwelling restricted to senior housing to clarify and set parking standards at one space per unit. Um, and this just came in part from hearing during the um engagement during the HAP. Um, that there was some people that didn't even know that this multifamily dwelling restricted term was referring to senior housing. And that this was a separate parking standard for senior housing development. So it's a way of just clarifying that for people that may interact with the code. Other additional parking si- considerations, uh so consider allowing fee and loop payments for retail uses in a mixed use building. In any location citywide. Um, is one idea. And then the other idea is related to guest parking, which currently is only allow, only, sorry. Currently only the CBD zones waive guest parking requirements. Um, and the idea that, two ideas that we're considering here is the waiver could be extended. To the R four commercial and MMU zones. Um, so kind of all the high density zones kind of get this uh waiver from the guest parking. Um, this only happens when nearby streets are fully constructed. And part of the rationale here is these are the higher density zones that are very close to a commercial app. Where a lot of the amenities are and are easily able to be walked to um and that um. There's space for um, there's space to allow for parking or to waive that parking requirement. Alternatively, another option is just to remove guest parking requirement citywide for multifamily uses um throughout the area. And this would be multifamily uses of um four plus uh units. Yeah, and. One of the last strategies um. That we came up with concepts for, so this is looking at the R one zone. Um, in the HAP, it looked at, it asked the next major comprehensive plan update, which we're going through right now. To reexamine the purpose, priorities and development regulations for the R one zone. Currently, R one is uh has a minimum lots has a fifteen thousand square feet. It's home to an elementary school, a public park. Um, or has public park land nearby, um has max density in the code at two dwelling units per acre. Um. And has an allowance to go up to four dwelling units per acre for cogist or special review process. Um, that is being, that was also proposed through um updates in the comprehensive plan. Um, and overall, essentially what we're looking at and asking to be considered here is the, there's. R one does have some benefits or has some benefits around open space and wild off corridors. That need to be um considered and we need to make sure that we, there's a moderate buffer between those spaces and then the rest of the city. Um, or um, but also, uh and then also that there's infrastructure needs in currently in R one zone. But if updates to the R one zone did happen, um that there are some streets. There are enough streets connecting to the main street grid um that this could work. And that new development is required to build connecting curb gutter infrastructure. And so new development could be a way of helping um. Build out the infrastructure in the R one zone. Um, we'll be looking at minor zoning changes uh that don't really, that shouldn't change the fabric. Of the R one zone. Um, it should still be kind of larger parcels or the larger lots with that by reducing the minimum lot size to ten thousand square feet. Um, but again, removing the maximum density um potentially as well. Um, which would just make uh cottage housing development that is already permitted, just a a little bit easier. Um, to happen in R one zones. Um, and lastly, uh. The city could look going forward at tax increment financing, which is a tool that could help finance roads, sidewalk, water and sewer improvements in the R one zone as well. Um, and tax increment financing um is is in part bolstered or kind of connected with. Um, allowing some new development to happen in the area. Um, Libby already gave kind of a preview of this already, but next steps, uh future land use map considerations and draft land use and housing goals and policies. And with that, I am done with my, uh done with the presentation. Uh, available to answer questions or have discussion.
Mr. Johnson, I'd like to say I really do appreciate um many of your slides actually included proposed language. And that was really helpful to see that, so thank you for that. Um, so I promised that before we had our discussion and the planning commission. That I would allow members of the audience to speak again, three minutes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I love the details, but there's a bigger change going on in the city. For thirty five years, the city involved neighbors in all the design discussions. Took an extra three or four weeks, but neighborhood input was solicited, it was addressed, conditions change. Could you imagine a more diverse community than Anacortes, all the different types of design? One size will not fit all, but you have leadership at the city who really wants to do a cutting cookie cutter approach. Where neighbors aren't consulted. I remember when I first came to the city in nineteen eighty one as planning director, one of the council members said, Ian, remember. I got excited because someone wanted to build a duplex. Ian, remember, neighbors have property rights too. And when this flashy A time publication comes out, it won't talk about the difference in philosophy. It'll basically say, you're not gonna, you're gonna love this. What it should say is, this may be your last chance to have a say in major proposals. To increase the density in your neighborhoods. If that was in the A time magazine, this chamber would be full. People do not understand, everything has been moved away from the public into the back offices at City Hall. And it's, it's, it won't fly. Two years from now, people, I know because I can see what's coming, two years from now, people will be up in arms. Where did this come from? Well, the real estate folks kind of developers slipped it in. Neighbors have rights too, they need to be notified. And one technical correction, cottage housing is not currently permitted in the R one zone. It's proposed to be permitted. Uh, and as I pointed out to you in my comments, most of the area is critical areas. And and it's not served by any services. And if we're gonna do tax increment financing, the place to do that is downtown. That's where you get a benefit. I mean, this is just developers want to develop the R one area. And the city refuses to use the old PUD language, Planned Unit Development Language, which would get more homes built in the, in the R one zone. Based on two units an acre. If you actually protect the critical areas, wetlands, streams, buffers, there's no land left. And you can't get to ten thousand square foot lots. So what people are doing is coming in and mowing them all down, and the city says, we don't care.
Thank you.
So I'd just like to reiterate uh my earlier statement about hiring a housing coordinator. I've just made a list here of pe- of of organizations that that person could contact. Uh, you know, I've contacted as president of Habitat, Skagit Habitat. I contacted a lot of churches, they were all interested in housing, it probably, you know, ways to do housing. They just didn't know how to do it and now we're, we're getting ready to show them. Um, so you could contact, that person could contact churches, HOAs, service clubs, neighborhood organizations. And many others that I can't think of right now. And that one person could come, I used to be a rotarian for fifteen years. You could go to the rotary club and tell them in some presentation that takes fifteen minutes, give them an idea. And may at the end of it say, this may be your last chance to make a comment for the next five or six years. So it, to get people interested, because if we wait till the last minute, it's, I I I can just tell you. It's, it it may not go well when you present this thing next summer, what you guys decided and the city has decided, not with enough input. Things may come on good a bit, so now's the time to to get those people involved. And I don't think it's that hard, but having a person like that would be very, very helpful.
Thank you. All right. Um, I'm gonna just open it up to commissioners, questions or comments that you have for Mr. Johnson. Or Mr. Coleman or Ms. Grage. Okay, Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, when we were talking about removing some of the restrictions on uh the parking numbers. Uh, you know, I mean, I could see that viable Ballard Fremont, I, you know, I come, come from those general areas. Uh, unfortunately for Anacortes, everybody needs a vehicle. Because if you are downtown and you have one, somebody who takes their kid to Fadago, they get assigned to Fadago. They're driving five minutes out of the way. Um, it's one of those where the limited parking is gonna be be. Um, a hindrance if we start upping up our density and reducing at the same time the parking spaces. Just because we're not an adjacent city, we're not, Mount Vernon is eighteen miles away. The ne- the clairest, next clear cities, you know, Oak Harbor, about about the same. So those are our sister cities aside from La Conner. So uh the convenience of of transit is not the same. So as, you know, as we just think about this, as we're moving forward on this, because that's a a concern, especially when we get over to the family housing. Uh, we get over to the family um and we're going, hey, let's reduce it to a point five. Um, you know, unfortunately for some of those individuals who are family centers helping out, they need vehicles because they're not working in Anacortes. Because we don't quite have the job variety that you do have in a denser population. So, you know, then that might later on hinder um somebody who just gets a car so they can go work these jobs, but now they can't park. So uh just things to consider when we're moving forward on this.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Chairman Martin.
Mr. Mills and then Mr. Dretzky.
Um, apologies in advance, I'm probably gonna be asking some questions that are more to help me learn. And think about what's been presented, so apologies if they're a little basic. But uh first one, it's more philosophical. In the first few slides, we talk about uh lot coverages and we talk about setbacks. Uh, trying to understand if you're reducing setbacks. Uh, and you're increasing lot coverage, all else being equal, it seems like that would result in larger housing units. The only thing I could think of is the offset is putting in, increasing the number of minimum, minimum number of units. Otherwise, you end up with larger housing units, which are more, the prices are higher. It seems to be counter to one of the objectives we keep talking about, which is lower cost housing. So it, in my, in my thinking process, Mr. Johnson, am I getting closer that the offset is increasing the minimum number of units?
Yeah, so, yeah, I I think two, so two parts of this. The lot coverage conversation um and concepts were related to the specifically to the R four. And R four A zones, which are the higher. are the higher density zones. And so there it is, increase in maximum lot coverage to allow more buildable area, which would allow for more units to be built on that lot. Um, more units being built on that lot can help uh reduce the amount of rent per, per unit or that somebody might be paying per unit type of, type of thing. And it's just overall fitting in more housing um on a lot for that zone. In relation to setbacks, the setback changes were looking at a different type of zone. So those would be more targeted at kind of the R two A and the R three zones, which are not um as high density, they're the medium density zones. Um, and those would be looking at kind of just providing more flexibility on the lot. Um, these are minimum setbacks, so these are not requirements, but the, it essentially is allowing more flexibility on the lot for duplexes and triplexes to go in and so that um you're not necessarily um boxing in a certain type of home or maybe the lot has a, a weird configuration or a slightly different configuration from normal lots and now that building is not designed that well or can't have the open space potentially that it could have if um it was able to be further up on the lot and now you have more backyard space instead of um trying to squeeze in um both a certain amount of front yard space and backyard space. Um, so that's essentially what the concepts are looking at. It's really looking at two different types of housing in the city, but trying to make it easier to do all types of housing um within those zones.
Chairman?
Thanks.
Did, did that answer your question, Mike, or? I think what you were getting at is there's concern that um allowing uh more lot coverage and smaller setbacks would encourage a larger single family residences if someone were to choose not to build a multifamily or duplex or something. So the intent of this, as Marcus explained pretty well, is to encour, is to make it easier for people to build a duplex or a triplex if they've got enough room on their spot, on their property. But the unintended consequence might be that instead of building more units, just a larger single family home might be built? Is that the issue that we're trying to address?
And, and my thought was that the offset of that is requiring a minimum number of housing units on a lot in that zone. Uh, so let's say it's R two and you're, you're going to decrease the setbacks. You can end up with two larger housing units, which means a higher price housing unit. If we're trying to, if we're trying to get more housing units, that's one thing, but if we're trying to get lower priced housing units, that's related but different. And so my question, kind of to help it fit into place in my mind, was are there offsets in the proposals to ensure minimum number of housing units? Is an offset to try to avoid that?
No, there's not in this, in this part. There is something later to, in the medium and higher density zones to require a minimum number of units to be built on a lot to make sure that exactly what you're talking about doesn't happen, make sure that a single family house isn't built on a, on a larger um R four lot, for example. What slide is that one on? Uh, if we can go to that slide.
Slide five, I believe. We were talking about the minimum density for R four zone?
Yes. So that one makes, that one makes good sense. Um, and it's something that I've experienced in the past in, in planning is having the higher density zone and somebody just gets a medium sized lot and puts a single family house on it, whereas there could have easily been ten units on it. So we wanna, you know, there's a very limited number of acres in the R four zone, so, uh, in the R three zone. So we do want to make sure that people are taking advantage, you know, the, of the number of units that can be there. So like as far as a minimum density, I think in the R four and R three, that's really important. I think minimum density in the R two might be something that people, you know, that's, that's mostly a single family residential neighborhood, so a minimum density of two might be uh a little bit much for us to propose at this time, but you're welcome to go down that road. Um, I don't think that's what Makers was, was intending. Um, we could think of other ways to address the concern that you're talking about, um, the, um, the, about larger single family homes being constructed in, say, the R two zone. If we increase um lot coverage amounts is, um, I don't know if it's equitable or if it's a good idea, but I'm just kinda throwing it out there. Um, maybe these setback changes and, and uh lot coverage changes only apply if you're trying, if you're taking, if you're doing more than one unit or if you're doing an accessory dwelling unit. I don't know. I don't know how, how we craft that. It's kind of the first thought. There's probably other good ideas out there too that may achieve the same, uh, address the same concern that you brought up, which is a good concern.
Thank you. Mr. Dretzky?
I've got a couple of questions on, on different pages. Page seven. State middle housing model code has a lot coverage of fifty-five percent. Yet your recommendation here to go is sixty percent? I sure like fifty-five percent better. As far as, again, filling up lots and aesthetics and all panel, why are we, why are you recommending sixty percent over the fifty-five? What am I missing there?
So the reason why there is, uh, generally in the R four and R four A zones, you're having more than six units. So an example for, on slide, the, well, I don't, we might have different pages now, but slide six where it talks about the example development on a fifteen thousand square foot lot, it was ten units on, ten, ten units on a thirty, on a fifteen thousand square foot lot, which is in a R four zone. Um, which would, which is at fifty percent. And basically, it's, it's basically saying that R four zone, we're expecting higher number of units. And so um the six units that is, the model code is using is, is a, is pretty much, it's, it's high for middle housing, but it's still low for um higher density development. And so we're saying, we're using that as a reference point, is just saying that we think sixty percent um is a good number for Anacortes um and would provide enough of a boost for R four zones that are doing higher densities um without still being kind of on, kind of being more in the middle of what typically happens in um kind of high density zones. You, there's, you can go to other jurisdictions and see seventy-five percent as, seventy-five percent allowance of lot coverage um in their highest density zones. So we didn't want, we weren't sure that was gonna be a good right for Anacortes. And especially since the R four zone. Um, other cities have much more land dedicated to high density areas. We just, sixty percent seemed like it would be a good jump for Anacortes during this update.
Thank you. Basically a comment, and it's not, it really has nothing to do with, with your organization, with page nine, um, building on the corner of Thirty Second and R. And my, I guess my comment or question is, and it obviously was not part of the permit process, but no parking allowed on R Avenue. No parking allowed on R Avenue. And Thirty Second is, is got a commercial buildings and other things going on there too. So um there is one garage per unit for that ten unit building, but there's not a lot of other parking for guests or people that have more than one car. There's no onsite parking on that property. Um, so I guess in the, in the future, I would like to see us kind of consider um what's the impact on the neighborhood for the excess parking beyond the one car that each tenant is allowed to have in their garage. Again, that's just a comment or question, but this picture struck, made me think about that while, while doing the review of this documentation or this packet this morning. Um, pa, uh, page twelve, simple question, fifteen foot setback, is that from the front door or is that from the base of the steps? If somebody has six steps leading down to the ground? Because if it's fifteen feet from the door, those steps then proceed?
It's usually the plane of the front of the house.
Yeah. Front of the house. So the steps could eat up, the steps could eat up a chunk of the, of fifteen feet.
Your steps are, unless it's a covered deck over the steps, uh, then the steps can be in the setback.
It can be, okay.
Um, you know, while we're talking about that, one other thing that we thought we'd, or I thought I'd mention is um when you have a, when, if you increase the, decrease the front setback, typically you have garages on the front, not always, a lot of the town, a lot of town has uh rear loading off of, off of an alley, but if you have front loading, um, we, we'd wanna see something in there to make sure that, that parking up front is long enough for a car. Fifteen feet's not long enough for a car, twenty is kind of your minimum. Um, we do have something in our code that says parking, required parking needs to meet dimensional standards. So in effect, what that would be is to cause the garage to be possibly setback five foot, which isn't necessarily a bad thing.
Or backloaded.
Or backloaded. In fact, you know, like often, uh, design standards will require garages to be set back from the front of the house, largely as an aesthetic thing, um, but there's also some safety issues, you know, allow for more visibility.
I don't know what the setback is in La Conner, but somebody just recently built some, built some homes there where the old ball fields were. And the setback must not be very long because of the steps. Of course, they, the homes have to be elevated there because of the flood zone, but the steps come all the way out to the sidewalk. It's just, uh, from an aesthetic standpoint, I don't think it's highly desirable, but anyway, that's my opinion. Um, and then I guess my last question is on page thirty-two. Um, I, I guess I'm trying to wrap my mind around the fact that affordable housing only requires a half, uh, you know, a half a parking space per unit, but a senior housing requires one. Um, I think, you know, I, I think and if we were to look around Anacortes, a lot of the affordable housing, the people have a car or possibly even two in an apartment. So, um, again, that just really causes congestion on the street if we're only gonna require a half space. And I understand developers want to have the, the most minimum number of parking spaces they have to provide. I understand the concept, it's, but it still seems too low to me.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry? Thank you, and that's all my questions.
Okay. Mr. Courier?
Yeah, Chairman Martin. Hey, Mr. Johnson, I was just curious if you could give some context on religious zones, uh, examples or cities or communities where you have religious organizations that are involved in affordable housing? I'd never thought about that before, but um there are a lot of churches with a ton of land in our town and others. But I was curious about, has that been successful and just giving some context on that would be helpful?
Yeah, um, so uh, the community I know best, um, because I partly live in it and partly because I did, um, is Seattle. And actually as a grad student, uh, three years ago now, I actually participated in a studio uh with an organization called the Nehemiah Initiative, which is a um black led uh religious organization um that kind of groups with uh black churches in Seattle's uh central district and um that are interested in trying to both kind of use affordable housing for faith-based organization goals and also as a way of um keeping their spot, keeping a location within the central district. Um, due to patterns of uh people moving away from the central district, um, black congregates and um also people doing more online um church service and so not needing to come to the big space as much as often. And so Seattle's been pretty successful in this process of doing affordable housing. Um, there is a project at the Great Baptist Church in the central district, if you wanna search for that, and I can also send you some links maybe after this meeting on some projects that I know of. I know there's another one in um the university district where, near the University of Washington, um, that has a big, this is, this is a really big project, much bigger scale than what I'm, what, what we're proposing here, but um kind of a, a, a church that's doing um student housing on top with a twenty-four story high rise and a thirteen story high rise. But that's uh what happens around your district in Seattle type of thing. But, so there, there's, uh, Seattle's been doing, as, there's been churches in Seattle that have been really looking at this and using um this, this, this new state law to kind of both create affordable housing for um the community and as a way of kind of solidifying um a spot and location within their, an area that they want to call home. Um, and also as a way of just kind of revamping their space, um, trying to do different things with their space and not having such, you know, uh, whether that be upgrading the facilities to have more space for uh music sessions or music classes or things that the community feels they need more of, um, rather than um just service based or kind of Sunday based um actions, but trying to expand upon what they can do in the community, um, and using that redevelopment um opportunity as a way of both doing faith-based for housing and faith-based for activities as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Stoneman?
Thank you, Ms. Spartan?
Can I, can I just, if I wanted to comment, please, in that conversation?
Sure.
There is a great example in um Skagit County, the Lutheran Church on La Venture, um, built a new, uh, large, large piece of property at the very, at the very north end of La Venture, and they've added um senior housing and, I don't wanna call it low income, but seniors on minimal income, um, complex there. And it's, it's a beautiful property.
Okay, Mr. Stoneman?
I, I actually wanted to ask on that same slide and then the adjust definitions for the family slide, when we're talking about the state law, again, I, I feel like the last presentation we had, was that the law that doesn't actually apply to us though because we're not a city or is this a different one?
This, this is a different, different law.
So this one does apply to us even as a small town or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
But on the religious one, as I noted during the presentation, um, the, the, the language in the, the language in the code or the language in the law is really um have this available when a religious organization comes and to the city looking to do this type of thing. So this is an opportunity to be proactive, but it's also not something you necessarily have to move forward into the code update at immediately um or have penalty from, from, from legislation or from the, from the state.
Okay, thank you.
While we're on that topic, I wanted to point out, so in the R four, R four A bonus, uh, you suggested sixty-five feet maximum height. Right now, in the R four zone, the maximum height is fifty feet. And we did experience quite a bit of pushback with that and the council and the city, I think the planning commission was also involved in public hearings and re-reviewing and making sure that fifty feet was the right height. So um sixty-five seems like it might be a bit of a stretch. So I wanted to ask Marcus while we had him here, is there any requirement that we, that the city go to such a max height or is, uh, are there any height requirements in, in that uh legislation?
No, it's not required for the city to go to that height. Um, it is, there's other forms of, there's other form of bonuses that can take place. Um, and so I think the important thing is making sure that um whatever bonus, if it's not height, that whatever bonuses you attach to, maybe the R four zone, are a distinct bonus from the current R four zone. So you don't want the bonus for affordable housing to be too similar to what is already currently allowed in R four, because it's not a real bonus then. Um, and you're not meeting the um spirit of the, of the law essentially. So you can do other things, you can do additional lot coverage, you can do... So you can do other things, you can do additional lot coverage, you can do reduction in parking requirements, you can do reduction setbacks, things of that nature as well, if height is not going to be something that can be moved forward on.
And it looks like Mr. Ryan and then Mr. Mills.
Yeah, I wanted to just, under that state law, so is that just, the city can't come in under their own guise, but can they still enforce other codes that limit, that restrict occupancy based on room size that are governed under other I codes?
I don't know the answer to that exactly. I'd have to go back and look through the law. It is a bonus, and so if you had certain limitations, it might not inflict, conflict with those, but I'm not sure.
Well, yeah, I understand that there's, because I know in some of the property codes, if you're going to have two people in a room, it needs to be a minimum of one hundred ten square feet. You can't have three people in a seventy-square-foot room. It's, it's not underneath, it's not permissible underneath certain property codes, but then the city ordinance would reinforce it versus it would not, we're not regulating, we're just enforcing other laws.
Yeah.
Or other codes that are required.
Yeah, yeah. I think you would, yeah, the building, the development would still have to happen underneath, like a building code regulation or anything of that nature. So you wouldn't, it's not pushing any crowding essentially, like these would still have to be.
Meet those, meet those minimum requirements for occupancy.
Yeah.
Right, I just didn't want it to get out of hand where somebody's going, well, then six, eight people can move into this six-hundred-square-foot ADU, and it's just like, no, they can't, so just put that out there for the general public.
Okay, Mr. Mills, and then I see Mr. McCombs has his hand raised, so.
Question regarding religiously owned definition. Do we know under state law how a religiously owned property is defined? Where I'm headed with that is, back in my day, you could get a religious designation by working off the back of a matchbook cover and calling a phone number. Now you do it online. Do we need to be concerned as we offer bonuses on religiously owned density projects that the definition of religious organization could bite us?
I don't think you have to worry about that. I think that, that would be covered, that's covered in the, the laws, the law text, and we could, any code amendment that we did for this religious owned density bonus would probably have, would match the definition in the current code for religious organization. And if there's no religious organization definition, we could add a religious organization definition that makes sure.
Or just have it covered by whatever, however the state defines it.
Yeah.
Yeah, by reference.
Right.
My other one, having to, other question having to do with religious organizations, and you may have told or perceived from my earlier question about lot coverage, impervious lot coverage is something that bothers me. And obviously, here in Anacortes, we have three thousand acres of forestlands and parkland, so we have pretty good percentages in that regard, but, and I'm not sure that this would apply, but we were talking about parking earlier and we're going to talk about it, I think, some more. As far as bonuses go for religious organizations, and I don't know if we have any specific places in town where this might apply, but should we give consideration to giving bonus for religious organization that provides parking through joint agreement with commercial or retail operations? Thinking of it cyclically, most of workers and shoppers are during the week and religious organizations have their peak parking requirement on the weekends.
Yeah, so two thoughts there. I think, one, the potential for reducing parking or the potential for reducing parking minimums is, is just that, it's just a minimum. And so the developer and the church itself or the religious organization could, will have, will have a good sense of the number of parking that they think will be useful for their congregation and that it can build more parking beyond the minimum. And related to the question of building in a standard, or building in a bonus that's related to some kind of code development or co-benefit with a commercial space, is, will probably, I'm sure there's probably a way to do it, it's also probably really complex and can make the code confusing and maybe difficult to administer and, but that doesn't necessarily mean that, I think, I don't think religious organizations should shy away from potentially doing those type of relationships with commercial entities if, if possible. It just might not be, it might just be very difficult and complex to put it into, to codify it.
It might be something that would be better served by an applicant coming in with a variance request and offering a quid pro quo. Thank you.
Mr. McCombs.
Yeah, I've got a few questions also. A lot of the questions that I had actually have already been covered, so thanks for asking, great questions, everybody. First of all, is there a definition of affordable housing?
Yes, so affordable housing based off of the state and based off of this religious owned density bonus would be affordable housing applies to eighty percent AMI for ownership units and sixty percent AMI for rental units. And usually the state laws are that these affordable units would have to be, stay as affordable units for at least fifty years.
Five-zero years?
Yeah, five-zero.
Okay. Can you explain what fee and lieu is when you're, you were talking about parking?
Yes, so fee and lieu is kind of a way of, basically instead of, instead of the development doing onsite parking, it's paying into some type of central bucket of money that the city can then use for maybe a group or some type of large parking facility or other benefit. It's basically paying the city the amount of money that it would cost to build a parking spot, but paying it to the city instead of building the parking spot itself.
Is, when we talk about lot coverage, I guess one of the things I think about is just, you know, the impact with water runoff, is there, is this considered from an environmental aspect?
Yeah, so I think on the lot coverage, and that's partially why, you know, that's embedded within not going as high in the lot coverage, I think the lot coverage conversation we're thinking about, we proposed, we proposed idea around for R4 and R4A zones to sixty percent, which is still leaving forty percent of the lot, you know, open to other uses that are not the building itself. And there's a landscaping area standard of twenty percent, so twenty percent of that, so half of that forty percent still needs to be landscaped area as well, and that would, that would stay within that area. So there's some vegetation, there's some landscaping that is helping to break down or capture rainwater and surface water.
Okay, so everybody needs a skinny driveway on those places, right? So that they can drain. And then my last question is really probably for more for, for Mr. Coleman. Is there, is there a plan to put these housing action plan considerations in a public survey?
So, thank you for bringing that up. The housing action plan items, well, the housing action plan was part of a survey, and if you recall, there was over, almost, there was over a thousand, almost eleven hundred people that responded. And the respondents, when asked, you know, the key question about, you know, should we allow more housing types like duplexes, cottages and townhomes and single-family residential neighborhoods if they're compatibly sized and designed? Only eighteen percent of owners objected or strongly objected, whereas forty, seventy, seventy were, were in support and thirteen percent did not support, or were like unsure, they wanted to know more. And when it comes to renters, only five percent of renters felt that the, those middle housing types in residential zones were opposed. So there, there is a lot of, a lot of support in the HAP for these items. Now, are we going to survey everybody on all of these multiple items in the chart that we've been going through? No, that, that's too complex. What we're trying to do is get the word out to people that we're doing this and participate in this process. We've now spent two meetings going over the details of it, so if people watch this, they can have a better idea of what's being proposed. And we're going to continue to have, you know, another open house. We're going to have public hearings on these. We're, the planning commission is going to be looking at this more, so there's, there's a lot of public input going on. So that it, any surveying that we're doing isn't going to be specific to asking every one of these, like how do you feel? The, while, bringing it back to religiously owned real quick, did you have any other questions, Mr. McCombs?
No, thanks for asking, that was my last question.
Just before we get too far from the religiously owned thing, it seems like maybe that sixty-five foot density or sixty-five foot height limit might be a bit much for the community. And since we, you know, we have other options to do such as set, you know, increase, decrease setbacks, parking reductions, increased density options, would, Marcus, could you possibly propose the other option that doesn't include that height limit at such a height for the city to, because this is something that we're required to do. We can't just say, no, we don't like that and then walk away from it. So we'd appreciate, Marcus, if you could bring us some additional options on that one.
Yeah.
No, sorry. I have something to say too. I think I, I want to bring us back to the whole, the bigger picture. We're here, we're being given the task of reviewing the housing action plan. The whole point of the housing action plan is to find ways to provide more types of houses and more density. That's the whole point. And if we go back, well, why do we want to provide more types of homes? Why do we want to provide more affordability? And what is the level of need would be another question. We know that currently we have about eighty percent, eighty-point-five percent of our, all of our dwelling units in our city are single-family homes. And with the allocations from the Department of Commerce, the Skagit Council of Governments, et cetera, the idea is by 2025, our single-family homes will be sixty-four-point-seven percent of our total housing. We know that, based on historical data, that approximately five thousand people are projected to come in the next twenty years, and of course, we want to be able to plan for those people. We are told that those five thousand people will require about twenty-nine hundred dwelling units. That's where the one-point-seven people per unit come from. And we know how many units of, you know, different sizes we currently have. So, so there's a need for that middle housing to happen. The question is how? And how, I think to Mr. Muntz's point, we maintain the integrity of our community and still provide houses for people of all kinds, of all levels of income. So with all of that big picture, here's my thinking. We've now heard from makers or their affiliates about all of the different proposals in the HAP plan that have already been winnowed down by the planning committee on the city council. And if we were to take all of those proposals, I think minus the land use, because that's, we really need to consider the land use separately, but if we were to consider all of the, the proposals and I think become experts of a section, I, I made a chart that I'm going to pass out here. You can pass those each way, and I think I might have an extra one or two. Why don't you pass one to Ms. Gleichman? Yeah, make sure they have them. What I'm thinking is, in order to move this forward and be ready to take some action, I'm thinking it would be helpful for us to have recommendations from the planning department, just like Mr. Coleman, you just talked about, you know, sixty-five foot anywhere in Anacortes doesn't seem to fit with our community. That kind of recommendation would be helpful. And in addition, if we were to have, you know, little subgroups of the planning commission look deeply at these different areas in the HAP plan, come back together so that we have the recommendations from the planning department, we have the, the deep dive from, you know, a couple of commissioners on each section. I think then we could really, and, and Mr. Johnson, you've already given us language, which is helpful, and Ms. Grage has already said that the intent is to have a spreadsheet with current language and proposed language. Again, I think keeping in mind, you know, what's going to get us the most value for the change and is it going to accomplish what we want to accomplish, keeping in mind the idea is more density and more different types of housing, more availability, especially at the middle level. So I'm throwing that out. I think there's, if we were to take a look at two-point-one is allow more housing types, and you can see there's one, two, three, four, five, six, there's seven different areas there. These have all now been covered by makers. I would leave out the streamline, the ADU regulations, because it is already done, and I, I think we can fix that without having a little subcommittee. The second one would be adjust the form and intensity standards. There's six, six there. The next one would be adjust the definitions and design standards. There's a few in there. There's a few in there. Adjust parking standards. I would personally say leave out the land use element right now. We've had some information about land use already, I know. And we need to get down to brass tacks with that, but at least this would get us the housing. And then we don't need, I mean, the things that are already required, we're going to get a recommendation on, you know, what, how exactly they should be worded. Anyway, what are your thoughts? Mr. Ryan?
Oh, no, I think breaking these down into sections, depending on how many people we got, can even team up into a specific section. But yeah, breaking it down so then we will be able to answer those, because it's a lot to digest if one individual has to try to concentrate on all of these. So yes, I concur with exactly what you were saying there.
Mr. Coleman and Ms. Grage, what is the impact on the Planning Department? If we ask for more information, basically you saying to us, we think this one might be viable, this one might not. It doesn't have to be a lot of detail, but just recognizing your professional opinions.
So that's where we're here for, we're here to provide you any of the necessary information for you to make the decisions and have the discussions that you want to have to make those decisions. And as far as the, you know, a planning department making recommendations on each of these, we're happy to do so. We would be doing so at the time of, you know, the official staff report, when it came time for you to make your official recommendations. We also make our recommendations to help.
I'm thinking not after us. What I'm thinking is your professional opinions would help to inform us. If we were to take a deep dive into just a section, this is the bite the elephant a little bit at a time. But doing that in a vacuum is difficult. And doing that without being professionals ourselves in this area is difficult. So I think we would need your input at the same time, is what I'm thinking.
So, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Muntz. Mr. Muntz, I'm not going to, I'm not going to allow.
There is an open public meetings act.
You are out of order, sorry.
So maybe I wasn't clear. Of course, we would provide you your, provide recommendations to you before you had to make any recommendations. If you want us to make recommendations based on what we have now and provide a little bit of, you know, background to each of, to you, if you're going to, the Planning Commission, if they're going to work on things, we can move up our recommendations earlier. So especially if we have, like, recommended changes.
I'm just thinking, this way, we can move something along. We can move at least the housing section along.
Yeah.
And we can, this is our assignment from the City Council, to look at the Housing Action Plan. Let's look at it, we've looked at it now, we've had presentations. Now let's do a deep dive specifically into these areas, but with your input as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
My thought.
So how did you want to break up the, you recommended some planning commissioners work on various elements.
That's what I'm thinking. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I was just going to, I guess, ask or assume the same thing. Is it a deep dive where we break into it in pieces, operating in parallel, that we're not all diving into the same thing? We bust it up and have two or three.
No more than three.
Yeah, I was going to say, we have to be careful not having an official meeting. But have breakout groups to then report back to the full commission on the area that they dived into.
Right.
Rather than trying to do, yes, I agree. I like the idea.
Yeah. Okay, I'm seeing head nods. Mr. McCombs, I can't see if your head is nodding, though.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
So, okay, so I think if people are in favor, take a look at the different areas and see what interests you and what you want to invest a little time in.
Can we maybe just do that via email over the next couple of days? Is that legal?
Uh, no, it's not. That would be a meeting.
Oh, okay.
Just pick a section.
I get that.
Yep, Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I think with my background, I'd love to be over and adjusting the definitions and the design standards. It's right up my alley, along with my family's. I have great resources on that. So yeah, I think that would be an area I would like to be in.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm the chair, the parking would be of interest.
Okay, parking for Mr. Courier?
I'm the chairman, I would be interested in the, I guess it's labeled page 29, but adjust form and intensity standards.
It would be helpful if, as we try to track this, if you were to say specifically which number is like 2.6.1, if the parking standards are 2.6.3.
Okay. I'll give all of that to you in just a second.
Great.
Who's interested in allow more housing types in more zones? There's a lot to that one.
I'll take some of that, maybe.
Mr. Stoneman?
Yeah, no, no specific choices on those, so however that breaks out.
Okay, and Mr. Dretzky also in 2.1? Mr. McCombs, do you have an area of interest?
Yeah, I can't see the list that you guys are looking at right now.
All right, let me read them to you.
Thank you. Thanks for holding that up.
The first one is allow more housing types in more zones. That is item 2.1. The second one would be adjust form and intensity standards. I forgot to write that down, but that would be item 2.4. The third one would be adjust definitions and design standards. That would be 2.5. Adjust parking standards is area 2.6. And I think, I think that's it. I think we should leave off the land use right now, just because we're just focusing on the housing right now. So are any of those of interest to you?
Yeah, I'd be interested in the definitions and design standards.
Okay. I think, however you want to do it, so it looks like Mr. Mills is by himself on 2.4, so I could sign up for that. And Mr. Courier is by himself on adjust parking standards. Is there anybody that, well, everybody has got at least one assignment.
So can we do two?
Sure, you can do two.
I'd sign up for the parking standards.
Okay, and Mr. Mills will be there as well. That way, we've got two people now on each one of these sections to look at. So let me review who's doing what. 2.1, all of the 2.1 sections, we've got Mr. Stoneman and Mr. Dretzky. However you want to work it together. Okay. We've skipped the ADU regulations just because I think that's almost done and I think we can figure that one out pretty quickly. Yeah, 2.4 is adjust form and intensity standards, and we have Mr. Mills and Dr. Martin. 2.5 is adjust definitions and design standards. We have Mr. Ryan and Mr. McCombs. 2.6, adjust parking standards, we have Mr. Courier and Mr. Mills. Now the question is timing. When, and I'm not real sure about what's planned on the agenda for the next meeting. Do we need to have these ideas by the next meeting? Does that give the Planning Department enough time?
I think we will probably need the next meeting to talk about the land use element and the housing element policy revision proposals, as well as the future land use map revisions. It's a big chunk of information.
Okay, so next meeting will be land use? And how can we tie down the housing? Can, is there enough time to do that at the same meeting? I don't know.
I don't, I don't think so. And I know that staff won't have enough time to make any recommendations before that meeting.
Okay. So then, the following meeting, that gives everybody more time. By the following meeting, we could come back to the whole group with all the housing proposals. Mr. Mills?
I was just thinking, would this be a good application for what I would call a more traditional work session rather than a formal exchange of ideas?
I think it definitely could be.
Well, you know, it works pretty well for us recording and hearing and for the public to hear it like this. And just because it's a formal meeting, it's not a public hearing formal meeting. You're still able to, at your workstation, you have a plug-in for your computers. And so it should be comfortable workspaces for you. It works really well for the audience and for staff to hear you working like this rather than around a table. If you want to suspend your rules for.
Recognition.
For recognition and have it less formal that way, I think as long as we can still have the opportunity to record and be seen on the camera and everything, that this, we can do more like a work session in this seating arrangement.
I understand the logistics would, we can have a published agenda and meeting without recording, and it's open to the public, but it's not recorded. I give as an example, the committee meetings of the City Council, according to the city attorney, are open to the public.
Right.
And they're not recorded.
Right.
So those, to me, are work sessions or committee sessions.
Those are not work sessions, those are committee sessions. Oh, you do, let me, you know, let me check with our attorney to, before you go, meetings separately, because there is, you know, serial meeting requirements as part of, we've all had the training for public meetings. So let's, you know, do our due diligence and make sure that we're doing everything right.
I agree, it needs to be done correctly and it needs to be done in public. But sitting around a work table, I understand, makes it hard to be recorded, but it can still be open to the public.
Yeah, but if we do them at planning commission, regular planning commission meetings.
Thank you.
The regular planning commission meetings are recorded.
Okay, well, I think we have some kind of a game plan at this point. And we'll work on the timing, but everybody has an assignment, knows what you're working on. So you can start working, I guess. Item six, I'm moving on here.
May I ask for some clarification? On the list here, it sounded like Stoneman and Dretzky are working on items within 2.1, but it sounds like you're taking one, two, three, four, five, six, three, one of you is taking three and one of you is taking seven. So you're not actually working together, so that's just kind of like a homework assignment and less of a committee.
True, but I at least was going to hit him up for, hey, how are you doing this? What does that look like? So we'll be talking, even though we each have our own.
Yeah, let me check to make sure that we're doing everything, you know, above, you know, in the light, as they say, for open public meetings.
So don't talk to him yet.
Don't go, don't go yet.
Okay.
Although, you know.
Yeah, I'm confident that two commissioners, and according to our new procedures, we can have a subcommittee and that we can call it a subcommittee if we want. But two commissioners working on something is perfectly legal and above board, for sure. But feel free to check, that's fine. Okay, I'm moving on to number six, Planning Department upgate.
All right. So hopefully, in October or early November, we're working on putting out a survey to help guide the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So that's something that the city's commissioned, a economic development strategic plan that the Economic Development Committee of the council has been working to get kicked off for a while. We're working with consultants, part of the Western Washington University Business School. I apologize, I can't remember what they call themselves. So they're putting together survey questions and that, once we get that perfected, they're going to be putting that survey out to the public. It'll probably be out for about three weeks, two to three weeks, we'll say around three weeks. We'll, of course, announce all of the details once we have them. So we want to get the word out that that's going to be out in the public. And then after that, we're going to have, schedule some listening and listening sessions where people can give feedback that's more directed to the consultant as they, you know, fine tune the report and based on the survey questions. So keep an eye out for that. That economic development strategic plan is largely going to also inform our economic development element. It's their strategy for outreach for that part. And then we'll get that to our consultants, who are going to be helping craft the revised, updated language to the economic development element, which won't be happening before November. Also, when things brought up, you know, the Housing Action Plans request, suggested a housing coordinator. The city does have a housing coordinator. The housing coordinator participates in all of the housing affordability and community services meetings. That's the HACs committee of the council. Many churches, service organizations participate in those. Our housing coordinator is also in touch with the regional service organizations. So that is a part-time position, but the city does have a housing coordinator.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Anything else?
Libby is shaking her head no, so that's all we have for you today.
I have one other thing. Thanks actually to Mr. Muntz for reminding me, but the Department of Commerce offers a short course on local planning. And I've taken this once before, but it is online and it's only an hour and a half, or two and a half hours, sorry, six to eight-thirty. On Thursday, September 26th is the next one. So if anybody is interested, it's free, you can sign up. I have information here about it. And. I have information here about it, and I've signed up for the next one, so if you're interested. Okay, hearing nothing else, we are adjourned.